Thank you, everybody. Okay, we are moving right along to 1.04. And we are going to be standing for the pledge in a minute. And we have with us tonight Victoria, who has been playing the double bass for the past six years and has enjoyed every minute of it. Being in the music program is best part of her day. She has recently played her most recent NISM solo at the opening day for the teachers in August. Wow, wonderful. So we have a really great treat tonight. So if we could stand for the pledge and remain standing for the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are moving right along to 1.05, our new and goods. And our acting superintendent is going to have a new and good for us, but he's running to get it. So while we have a moment, does anybody else have anything they'd like to share that is new and good?
All right, well, my daughter is just loving UPK at her kids cottage. She is just having a fantastic time. It is a thrill to pick her up every day and see her happy and dirty and tired. So I think it's a, you know, I know it's not necessarily new news, but it's still good news.
It is. Okay. Acting superintendent?
So Dr. Gorman has put together a little slideshow that we're going to look at. I've had the pleasure to read to all the kindergarten kids at Kent Primary School. And today I read to kindergarten kids at Matthew Patterson Elementary School. And I also had the pleasure of working in the school store at Matthew Patterson, which was a treat with all the little kids coming up. And Dr. Gorman, can you show that slide?
Did you have a look at the books?
Yeah, you're going to see the books that we were reading to the kids. I was reading to the kids. And I'll tell you, I taught middle school and high school for about 12 years, and it's much tougher being with the little kids. Those are the books that I read. One was about a tortoise going on a trip around the world, and another was about, I can't see them from here.
But you had a great time.
I had a great time, and I thought that was worth our telling, that it was a pleasure being in
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we are moving right along to 1.04 and we are going to be standing for the pledge in a minute and we have with us tonight Victoria who has been playing the double bass for the past six years and has enjoyed every minute of it. Being in the music program is best part of her day. She has recently played her most recent Nisma solo at the opening day for the teachers in August. Wow, wonderful, so we have a really great treat tonight, so if we could stand for the pledge and remain standing for the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we are moving right along to 1.05, our new and goods and our acting superintendent is going to have a new and good for us, but he's running to get it. So while we have a moment, does anybody else have anything they'd like to share that is new and good?
All right, well, my daughter is just loving UPK at her kid's cottage. She's just having a fantastic time. It is a thrill to pick her up every day and see her happy and dirty and tired, so I think it's a, you know, I know it's not necessarily new news, but it's still good news.
It is. Okay, acting superintendent?
So Dr. Gorman has put together a little slideshow that we're going to look at. I've had the pleasure to read to all the kindergarten kids at Kent Primary School and today I read to kindergarten kids at Matthew Patterson Elementary School and I also had the pleasure of working in the school store at Matthew Patterson, which was a treat with all the little kids coming up. And Dr. Gorman, can you show that slide?
Did you have a look at the books?
Yep, you're going to see the books that we were reading to the kids. I was reading to the kids. And I'll tell you, I taught middle school and high school for about 12 years and it's much tougher being with the little kids. Those are the books that I read. One was about a tortoise going on a trip around the world and another was, I can't see them from here.
Me neither. But you had a great time.
I had a great time and I thought that was worth our telling, that it was a pleasure being in the different classes and there was one class with a number of children with IEPs and additional aids in the room and it was great to be in that room and the kids asked a lot of questions, which made me sweat. And you don't see that on the high school level and it was just a pleasure to do that and I'm doing it again tomorrow and I'm going to get to all the kindergarten classes and all the elementary schools.
Thank you for sharing. Your new and good, wonderful. Okay, moving right on to 1.06, open session. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to address the board? Please step to the mic.
There is one person signed up.
Oh, sorry, one person has signed up. Hold on.
Mr. Metz? Okay, then you're up.
Please step to the mic and if you could just state your name and the town for us.
Sure, Daniel Metz, town of Kent. Thanks for having me tonight. It's the first time doing this. I have a kid in Kent Primary right now in kindergarten, so you probably read to her. Rich, thank you very much, appreciate the engagement there. I just wanted to bring up the topic of universal pre-K. Yeah, I hope you've had a great experience with that. It's a wonderful addition to the school system. I know there have been conversations recently initiated by the outgoing superintendent and forums on the model for switching from community schools to Princeton schools and a number of different points that have been walked through in those forums. The one, I think, main potential benefit sounded like it would have been moving UPK into potentially one of the Kent Primary or Kent Elementary Schools and finding room for it in a building that the school district owns as opposed to kind of farming it out to local preschools. And I wanted to request to the board, I don't know how this works exactly, but to maybe consider looking at that as kind of a standalone issue. I think there are a lot of families, frankly, who aren't in the school district yet who would benefit from that, who aren't necessarily being engaged because they're not in the school system yet, people with younger kids, two, three, four, I have a three-year-old and also another one on the way soon who hopefully, thank you, hopefully will benefit from that UPK program. But the opportunity for it to potentially be in a school with other peers who will also be going to those same schools, potentially having busing available for UPK students along existing routes was something that was discussed. I think there are a lot of potential benefits there. The general theme that I heard at the forums to date were, you know, there was a lot of, there were a lot of individuals who are already in the school district and wouldn't necessarily benefit from, you know, that change that was being discussed individually. So I just wanted to raise that topic about, you know, potentially engaging more directly on that specific topic as opposed to the focus on the school model change.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
How you doing? Jerry Lee Stormville, Nick, you can hear that on the mic, just if you care. I'd like to speak a little bit about the budget from last year, just real quick. I believe we voted on a $141 million budget, according to the Appropriations Status Report, Detail Report from 7/1/24 to 6/30/25, the actual budget between the additional funding that we had and made on interest or whatever. The total adjusted budget ended up being $164,960, so that's almost $165 million. And we seem to be, you know, well over what we had spent and, you know, this just completely blows my mind that as a taxpayer that we're constantly being asked, you know, it's only going to be another 1% or half percent or 30 bucks next year, 50 bucks the next year. Just seems to be unreasonable to me that no matter how much money that we end up having, it's never enough and we got to pony up for some more, please. I'd also like to speak a little bit about, I know the person's no longer with us, but the phone pouches. I'm wondering if the board knew before that PO at the end of June last year or this year was written for $78,000, if you guys were aware of that or not. Maybe you don't want to answer now, maybe you could in board comments, that'd be fine. You know, just for the record, that check that was written for that much was just canceled on 9/17, so that thing was floating around out there for months, literally. You know, my kids, when they went to high school here, they avoided certain bathrooms because they knew they were vape-popular bathrooms. Nobody ever said, hey, you kids that are vaping, you got to put that in a pouch and lock it up for the day. We got to spend a ton of money to put your vapes away. If we followed up with disciplinary actions and when people weren't doing things the way they were supposed to, we wouldn't need to spend all this money. I just think that some of the stuff is like, you know, ridiculously out of control. I'd also like for one of the more financially conservative board members, maybe tonight, to make a couple of motives or motions, I'm sorry. And one of them is make a motion that, you know, any and all money that's budgeted for field trips gets spent on field trips. It doesn't get adjusted down because we might not be taking field trips and if it is, let's get it transferred into something that is kid activity slash parent paid for only type of things. Let's take for a couple of examples, you know, didn't get spent on field trips, okay, maybe it goes to the post-prom party. You know, not spent on field trips, how about goes to the homecoming dance? You know, not spent on field trips, anything that's directly related to the kids that usually they either have to raise money for, the PTO raises money for, basically asking parents for donations to pay for this particular student activity. How about we just keep it? If it was allocated for student activity like field trips, if it doesn't go to field trips, have it go to some other student-related activity, direct, that's going to be coming out of parents' pockets anyway. I mean, let's be honest, the kids aren't paying for this stuff. Maybe they are, but not likely. And just this little picky thing for me, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but, you know, in the field trips, the music field trip, the music classes are going on a field trip the end of October. 10 grand, 100 bucks a kid, 100 kids are going. Included into that price is the two substitute teachers. I mean, I know it's only 250 bucks, so it doesn't really come out to much per kid, but still, we have now, we have building level subs and that just seems, you know, really, if the person was absent, it wouldn't get charged to the kids, we would just cover the sub. Secondly, I would like to propose that on 6.01, the approval of instructional and non-instructional personnel requests, that the creation of yet another position, that is, and that is an executive assistant to the Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations and Human Resources, be separated out and have a roll call vote from the rest of that whole selection of people because it's yet another position that we're creating, again, another cost to the district that we're being created and there is no dollar amount attached to it. You know, with that being said, we have a teacher in the district that last year was paid $182,000 to teach six kids a week in the district office, since he's not allowed to be around the general population of students, who as of a foil response we received, has zero students enrolled in his classes as of September 26th, still getting paid the $182,000. Why don't we just have that guy be the assistant? We're already paying him, he's got no kids in his classes, why don't we just have him do that job? I think that would be, you know, kind of fair. Last week I, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, I asked about the renovations that were going on in the district office. Now, unfortunately, I know just enough about the budget stuff to be a thorn in your side or a pain in the ass, whatever you want to call it, but I'm also smart enough to know that I don't know all that much about it and I often ask people to tell me if I'm wrong and I sincerely mean that. I don't want to be standing up here and people watching at home and going, you know, and you guys going, he's out of his mind, he's completely wrong. But I don't really get corrected all that much, though, which to me says I'm probably right. You know, it's in the budget and it's getting billed to supplies. Like, that is just to me, again, ridiculous. There was no money in the budget for an office renovation, which the taxpayers probably would have said, what are we doing this for? Why are we paying for office renovations? It gets done anyway and I'm going to guess, I don't know what the cost was, maybe somebody can answer that in board comments as well, what the cost of the renovations to the district office is. But I think that's how we got in trouble in the past, is billing things or perhaps just shuffling money so it's hidden in something that doesn't look like a building renovation that we may or may not really need and let's just throw it over here in supplies because, you know, maybe nobody will know the difference. A wise woman just told me over the last couple of days that open and accurate communication cuts down on frustration. So maybe if we could have some open and accurate communication, it'll cut down on the frustration. Hey, and then maybe I won't need to come up here and stand, you know, every couple of weeks and bother you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on to board comments, 7.07. Anybody? Trustee Wise?
Yes, so just, I want to thank the both speakers who spoke tonight and there were a number of questions raised, so I'm hoping we can sort of at least get the easy ones out of the way. I know the question was raised about the difference between the final adjusted budget and the budget that was voted on. Could we understand where that came in? I know some of that we've discussed in past meetings was things like interest, income from interest that was not, had not been calculated correctly in previous years. Were there other pieces of that or what does that reflect?
We're mixing a lot of things here, none of which together are correct. And so I would say that I would, I think I should report back to the board at a later time and put this together.
Okay, so yeah, if we could get, if it has to be in writing, if we can get something back on the difference between the sort of-
Yes, you've already received that. We also have our audit coming up in public sessions shortly. The audit is almost finished for the year, which will explain a number of these things. I would just say to you that a portion of the increase in the budget from what is voted on by the public is what is carried from the year before. That gets added on to what's called the adjusted budget and that becomes the total budget for the year. There is no addition to the budget. We didn't spend that much and I would prefer to have this be something done separately.
Yeah, and I would say for the record, the question is not, did we spend more than we budget? No one is suggesting that, but rather as we look at potential future year budgets and we come back to the same question of, well, do we need to raise taxes? Should we raise taxes for various other reasons? Knowing where, you know, sort of where we had more income than was initially visible helps a lot, but yeah, in writing is fine on that and I understand the audit process will make a lot of that very clear. Thank you. Just speaking for myself, I never signed a communication to the board about the phone pouches prior to the PO being cut and that check being issued. I don't think there was. I do think there's a reasonable question here. I know there was a question of it being a sole supplier situation, but I know that we have a normal policy that any contract that amounts to over $35,000 does go out to a call for proposals. Was that, is something that happened in the phone pouches issue? And I know that you weren't necessarily driving that, but, you know.
Yes, but the check was never issued. It never left my desk. And then we found out that we were able to do this through a BOSI's Upstate as a cross contract with a BOSI's Upstate at less than half of the price of what that originally was and it became state-able or BOSI's-able as well. They have, we have still not paid them through, even through BOSI's because we are waiting for our internal claims auditor to sign off on this purchase and look at the way it was done. So that is sitting in the office waiting for the internal claims auditor next week.
And so the amount of this was about half of that? Was it above or below the cutoff where a call for proposals would normally occur?
It depends. If you look at it with the state aid, it's well below.
Right, but the size of the, our policy determines that by the size of the contract, not the amount that we actually pay.
But this was also a procured vendor. It didn't apply to that.
Okay, so yeah, I'd like to have a better understanding of that and I know that as we get to a final picture of what this costs, if we can include that information.
Yes, and again, just so you know, our auditor is actually taking a look at this at our request.
I appreciate that, that helps a lot. And yeah, just, so coming back to some of the comments that were made by the speaker, I do want to emphasize that we do see this recurring issue where field trip budgets are not completely spent in the course of the year. And this always strikes me when we see things like a music field trip or a technology project where parents are paying a substantial amount of the cost, but if you look at things like other areas like sports or so on, where the parents do not bear part of the cost of things like transportation, things like substitutes and so forth, I think there is room for a lot of improvement there where if we have money that's literally being returned to the budget because it's not being spent on field trips, I would love to see us use that to defray the costs of these programs.
Can I make a comment on that, please?
Absolutely.
When there is an amount in a budget for a particular item such as a field trip and the, for whatever reason, the school decides not to go on a field trip, that money either sits there or is used for some other purpose. Ultimately, everything that we spend is for the kids, so it could be used for a salary for somebody, it could be used for a benefit, it could be used for another type of supply or other purpose. At the end of the year, you may recall that you approved our transferring, making final transfers at the end of the year to balance the end, the budget at the end. We then take everything and make, there can't be anything negative, it all becomes zero or positive at the end and that all trickles down to the fund balance. We do anticipate a very large fund balance at the end of this year. We spoke about that, I think, the last time or a couple of times before that. Part of that is because our auditors discovered that something that we thought was a liability is not a liability and that's adding $3 million to our reserves for insurance premiums, for insurance costs. So everything that's in the budget is either used or not used. It all trickles down at the end. If it's for a specific purpose and that purpose is not needed, it's used for another purpose or it's not needed. It's not used in the end.
No, I do understand that, but I mean, I do want to push back a little on the point, obviously, everything we spend is for the kids, but when we budget an amount in one category versus another category, that's a reflection of the board's priorities for how money is spent. So when we have, when we budget a certain amount for field trips and we see again and again that this does not result in more field trips being taken, it results in money coming back to the general fund at the end of the year, or this does not result in field trips being less expensive for parents, it results in money coming back to the general fund at the end of the year, I worry that that's, and again, this is not a, you know, directed at necessarily the district office, there may be impediments at building level to field trips being taken, but the fact remains that I worry that this reflects the board's priorities in spending not being followed.
I would not characterize this as again and again. I would say that this year, we know that we encourage the building principals to have more field trips during this year and you may recall we added substantial money to all of the field trip codes in the district, whether it be music or art or something like that. We've encouraged them time after time again to use this money. We also made a decision, or the board made a decision, that we were going to pay for these field trip costs and so that's a part of why we beefed up these budget codes for this year. We are hopeful that it will be used as planned.
Right, well, obviously, and that's, both the administration and the board can only say, this is how we plan for it to be used and we hope it will be, but the fact remains that we have a field trip on the agenda tonight, which still costs $100 per child, which raises the possibility of this being exclusionary for parents who are not able to put up that money. We have, at least every year that I've been on the board, at the end of the year, money has been moved back from the field trip budget into the general fund, which means it's not all being spent. How do we encourage the buildings to spend that?
I've been waiting.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm going to ask if Trustee Torpey would like to speak, then I've got you next.
at building level to field trips being taken, but the fact remains that I worry that this reflects the board's priorities and spending not being followed.
I would not characterize this as again and again. I would say that this year, we know that we encourage the building principals to have more field trips during this year. And you may recall, we added substantial money to all of the field trip codes in the district, whether it be music or art or something like that. We've encouraged them time after time again to use this money. We also made a decision, or the board made a decision, that we were going to pay for these field trip costs. And so that's a part of why we beefed up these budget codes for this year. We are hopeful that it will be used as planned.
Right. Well, obviously, and that's, both the administration and the board can only say, this is how we plan for it to be used, and we hope it will be. But the fact remains that we have a field trip on the agenda tonight, which still costs $100 per child, which raises the possibility of this being exclusionary for parents who are not able to put up that money. We have, we, every year that I've been on the board, at the end of the year, money has been moved back from the field trip budget into the general fund, which means it's not all being spent. How do we encourage the buildings to spend that?
I've been waiting.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm going to ask if Trustee Torpey would like to speak, and then I've got you next.
Yeah, um, Jim's, Trustee Wise has covered a lot of what I wanted to say in depth. The pouches, I do not believe is a board-approved decision, so just for clarity there. We can be reimbursed for those, but we were never asked. We never gave approval for that. Field trips, I would love to see all the money that is allocated for field trips used for field trips so that there is no money to go back in the general fund. This has been a, this has been a very, very big issue for people in our community. I said when I was running, thank you, Jim, I said when I was running that I would love to see every class and grade get two field trips per year, minimum. You know, it might get to the point where we need to do more than encourage the building heads. We might have to have some sort of requirement for field trips that we, you know, these are, we talk about being student-centered and putting students first, children first. Field trips are immensely important. They, I mean, the data is there. They help with testing, they help with everything, across the board, every metric. They engage students, they make every subject intrinsically motivating. Who, just for clarity, who is in charge at the end of the day of planning a field trip? Just for clarity for the community.
Though, the teachers in the various departments would go to the building principal, and they would request a field trip. And that field trip would be approved or not approved by the building principal.
Thank you.
And then the board.
Yeah, we will always approve.
But it would initiate on the building level with the principal, of course.
Yeah, so just for clarity, those field trips are initiated by teachers, need to be, go up to the building level, and then approved by the board. If teachers are not initiating field trips, then we may have to initiate them for those teachers, right? And again, this has been a big issue in our community. We pay a lot of money in taxes. Our kids deserve field trips. Can you elaborate on the, the office renovations happening at the district office?
Thank you.
The, a decision was made to move the superintendent's office upstairs so that the three assistant superintendents could be together in one place with their supports, with part of their support staff. The result of that has already been that the three of us have been collaborating on a daily basis and meeting once a week to discuss all of our parts. We cannot work in silos. We work together, and we do that on a daily basis and then on a weekly basis. That was the reason. We came to, we, we had this office upstairs that was previously occupied by another department. When they moved out, there was no furniture in that department, none, in that office area. Further, anytime an area is vacated in the district office, the windows, which are some 60 or 70 years old, have been replaced. So this was also done in this area. A total of five or six windows were replaced that had been there since the 1970s, 1980s. And this has been the case on this floor. Every time, there has been an opening in the floor, we, on that floor. So we painted, we replaced the windows, and we got furniture where there was no furniture whatsoever in that room. And we did it without any cost for shipping or for assembly of the furniture, and that was the narrow, one narrow part of this. We also do renovations in the district office for things such as the bathroom in the lobby, which, if you have seen that before we renovated it, that bathroom was from the 1960s and had not been, nothing had been done to it. And so we did that. We replaced some carpeting in the district office. We do these upgrades and renovations everywhere throughout the district. And there is nothing special about what has been done in the district office that is not done in all parts of the building. When there's repairs that are necessary, we do the repairs.
So I have a question about that, if I may. There was a suggestion tonight that that was taken from the supply budget. I know that when we had similar renovations for bathrooms and so on in the school buildings, those were part of a capital budget that was brought to the board. Was that a misunderstanding, or were those brought out of the supply budget?
It's just not correct. What is used from the supply budget, furniture can be purchased from the supply budget. It's a perfectly acceptable way of buying furniture. Nothing else was from the supply budget. Anything else was from under, facilities department under major repairs or important repairs. Labor is under labor. The supply budget was only used to purchase the furniture for the superintendent's office on the up floor. Nothing else.
Thank you.
There was no new carpeting put in. There was, there was nothing else done except furniture for that office.
Thank you. Okay, um, the only other thing I'd like to address, the question we had or the comments we had about the UPK. You are, I know you mentioned our outgoing superintendent, but our incoming superintendent is sitting right over there and heard the comments, and that, you know, the board is still working with our outgoing superintendent and will be working with our incoming superintendent on all of those models. And thank you for bringing that. It's a great suggestion, and I'm sure there'll be more community forums about this in the future, and we will make sure that those answers are answered. I don't have an answer for you this evening, but we, we took your point, and we appreciate you coming out tonight, and thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
I need to make a motion to return to executive session for the purposes of receiving legal guidance on manners exempt, and manners exempt from opening meetings law, and the employment history of a particular person. Can I get a, oh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, we really apologize to do that to you guys tonight, but we do have two attorneys that are sitting in there, and we want to be fiscally responsible and get them out of here as soon as possible. We should be back hopefully within a half hour.
Thank you, everybody, and our apologies. So we're going to try to move really quickly. Moving on to 2.01, our superintendent report. And I'm going to turn it over to our acting superintendent.
And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gorman, who is going to be giving us an update on some areas.
Wonderful.
Good evening, everybody. So first of all, Mr. Silver, we wanted to update your day. And so if you look at the picture, there is Mr. Silver actually reading to kindergarten students and working in the school store over at M-PES. So we wanted to capture what you've been doing. Did you enjoy yourself there?
I did. That was great. Thank you.
All right, moving along. I was able to watch back last board meeting, and I know there were some questions about elementary liaisons versus department chairs. So I wanted to do diligence. I met with all three: high school, middle school, and elementary grade-level liaisons and department heads. So I want to just take you through some of my findings. I also met with CTA to get an understanding, Aaron, on the history and the context. So there are elementary liaisons that you approved, that MOA, last month, and they are in grades kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. And I'm sorry about that fifth grade. I'm used to K-5 schools, not K-4 schools. And three RTI folks. So there's 18 of them, and I do believe the stipend is $1,537 a year for a total of $27,766. Prior to 2018-19, there were elementary department chairs in place in language arts, reading, mathematics, science, and social studies. They're still in the contract on page 68 and 69. And if you do the math on their potential, if they were here instead of the liaisons, it would be 27,760. So there's a net of $6, which I think was a question at the last board meeting on whether it was worth it and did we lose money or make money. So I wanted to clarify that to you. General talking points on the comparisons. I met with the elementary liaisons today from 3:00 to 4:30 at one of our first meetings, and I met with them on Friday as a meet and greet. We talked about a lot of really great pieces about communication, articulation, consistency among the three school buildings versus having a department chair that might be at one building. So communication is really great, that there is a element, a grade-level one liaison at all three elementary schools. And through our meeting today, we are messaging much more consistently because, and they get to coordinate efforts. So I know there's been conversations at the board level about the Princeton model and all. This helps at least communication and continuity of instructional and curricular practices, especially over the last two or three years with the onset of CKLA and the new literacy series. I was told many times, without the liaisons to effectively communicate, look at professional development, order supplies, budget, and field questions, and communicate with their teams, we had a really good chance of implementing at a higher level, and it could have reached some real frustration points without them. And then the other thing that I wanted to really share with you is that the liaisons and the department chairs at all levels, they're sort of an extension of the ASI office. In previous roles where I've had the ASI, there's usually, there's different structures, right? So there could be a K-12 supervisor of math or literacy, but there's not. So without this extension of help at the middle school, high school, and elementary school, all the responsibility would be on a singular person, K-12, all content areas. So the point of department chairs and liaisons is that they are an extension of the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. So I do think the mechanism is not necess, it might be unique here, but it definitely is an effective piece. If you go to the next slide. So my first meeting with each group level, I asked them what their major roles and responsibilities are in addition to the writing on pages 68 and 79. And they gave me some highlights, and we just did glows, what they're proud of, goals that we wanted to set for this year. So you could see at the elementary grade level, we want to take a look at math and focus. Common assessments are a big priority for the district on where our kids are. So how do we properly instruct them? How do we provide the right interventions? We don't know unless we have the right assessment data. So the what I need periods are really important to provide the right interventions for kids. And that was a good conversation that I had with them today. Our data system integration, all of this then fills right into the MTSS system and RTI. And so we're trying to bring all this together by looking at data throughout the year. I think that'll be a big theme for all of our schools, is to use branching minds as a data dashboard, to be able to look at where our kids are, what standards and skills they may need to improve upon, and what is our response to those gaps that may exist. And the continuity of communication is a really powerful piece with a shared instructional alignment. If you go to the next slide. The middle school folks, we talked about the different, and I know that when I said, "What about last year?", they said, "We didn't have department chairs last year." I said, "I understand that." I said, "But explain to me some of your, what you're proud of in your departments. What are your highlights? What have you accomplished in the last couple of years?" One of the things that I was able to look at right away with the math supervisor was the advanced criteria for math placement, which was very solid. And we talked to a couple of parents and placements on that in seventh grade and eighth grade. And I'll be able to show you a little bit of some, a little data on my comparison at the middle school in a couple of slides. But they talked about the new implementation of the math program in seventh and eighth grade, in VISIONS math, and possibly looking at curriculum maps and using different literacy interventions and continuing data for formative assessments. And then at the high school chairs level, again, there's a reference to the contract page that defined their roles and responsibilities. And then we talked about implementing the science standards, leading the PLCs on the extension of instructional periods this year, using formative assessments, the MTSS program, digital health curriculum that Lauren had put in place through title funds last year, and looking at other additional CTE programs and courses. So I wanted to just pause there and see if you had any questions about, as a follow-up to last board meeting.
None of this. Thank you.
No, that's very informative. Thank you.
Good. And I really, I didn't want, I didn't want to talk on it until I met them. And so I really, that was great to actually start the year and start really building relationships with all of them. All right. If you move on, I know I was charged, the first meeting that I spoke at was to give you a numbers comparison from 25-26 to 24-25. Before I did that, I did want to showcase these really cool banners that we purchased and were placed on the building. Really, they look awesome. We're also following up with the middle school We're also following up with the middle school with furniture for the cafeterias, both in the small cafeteria and large cafeteria. We've gotten Mr. Fratto involved and administration. We're working with Sarah Beo, who is a community member but works for BOSIS as a consultant for us for our social and emotional learning. And we're, you know, really looking at the fifth grade and middle school. Either, if you don't love middle school, either you love middle school or you don't. And the primary reason is that it's a time of change. It's pre-adolescence. It's a hormonal time in kids' lives. So there's a lot of change and there's a lot of attention that don't always focus on, you know, academics. And so it's a unique time and place, but the social component of it is such an important part of middle school. And so we want to meet kids where we are. And I was really excited to work with Erin when she said, "Go for it." And let's like, really make part of middle school a lot of fun for children, because why shouldn't it be? So I'm going to go over just a quick comparison of sections and average class size from '25, '26 to '24, '25. Knowing also, being a newcomer but learning the history quickly in the district, that the master schedule has been an issue over the last couple of years. And so my data is okay. And I'm only going off of the stuff that we're reporting. But I didn't, I don't know the intricacies of the schedule. So there might be some human error in there that I'm not aware of. So I was just able to analyze the data from the reports on the schedule from the last two years. So this includes courses in ELA, math, science, social studies, and only general education in this analysis, because we'll do a deeper dive in a couple of months with other subgroups. And other courses that are traditionally taken at the high school have been family and consumer science, the independent study, health, music, technology, art, library, and reading. So we're looking at class sizes again. And in the fifth and sixth grade, it just looks like numbers were a little bit bigger in '24, '25 compared to '25, '26. So class averages were within contractual language. And it was, is just a little bit less from one year to the other year. But sections were basically the same. And we're averaging about 23 to 25 kids, and a student or less in fifth and sixth grade. If you go to the seventh grade, that's when you start to departmentalize and branch off of the all as they start transitioning for high school. So some things just to point out for you. The math seven accelerated course in '25 and '26, there were 53 kids with an average of 26.5. Last year was 52. So that's basically the same. And the French, Spanish, and Italian, I thought was interesting that there were 37 kids last year, or this year, taking French versus 26 last year. A few students less in taking Spanish and a few kids taking Italian. Those three romance languages extend throughout the schools. And again, I don't know how much you want to draw on it, but it's, they're just small anomalies that I just wanted to point. And good discussion topics on what kids' preferences are. And then if you go to the eighth grade, sections and averages, you'll notice the earth science and the algebra are eighth-grade high school courses, the equivalent of high school courses. And we do have a percentage in both years in '25, '26, '24, '25 on the amount of kids taking that. That ties into the criteria. And also, how does the new math series take hold? And how does the new curriculum take hold? And that usually takes about three years of data to take a look at it. And then again, with the French, and it looks like in eighth grade, there are more kids taking Spanish and less kids taking French. So again, not overwhelming by any extent, but just data to look at and pretty consistent, at least by the reports that I got to analyze. Next month, I'll come back and I'll give you a high school comparison. And we'll take a deeper dive into the class size and sections there. Very cool. So two really exciting things to share with you. Mr. Silver and I have been working with the middle school. We've outreach to Congressman Mike Lawler. And we have, we have secured a speaker, a World War II veteran, to come meet with our kids at the middle school on November 21st. I'm working with the department chair at the middle school and the social studies team and the middle school administration on how that day looks from the morning hours, from 9:00 to 11:00 or 9:00 to 12:00. We'll probably do a nice story and some nice public relations on it also to showcase it. And I also wanted to let you know that we had a really successful Constitution, celebration of Constitution Day on September 19th, on September 17th. The high school, middle school, and elementary school all had different educational learning activities. There were the law and eco classes, we're doing multi-day constitutional scavenger hunts on Articles 1, 2, and 3. There were ideals of democracy instruction activities. Teachers were grabbing different resources. The middle school was analyzing goals set forth by the preamble and the Bill of Rights. So that was definitely a powerful learning day on September 17th. I wanted to call it out. And I'm excited about November 21st, that we were able to make that happen. And then lastly, this year has been the onset of the Fifth Grade Academy that was launched in September, and again, before I got here. But really trying to make a school within a school a smaller learning environment, a more safe, secure environment for kids transitioning from fourth grade into the middle school. We launched it in September. It is, it provides a unique space for the kids, so they are not integrated with the whole school. It's more of like a standalone transition year. On the buses, the kids sit in the front rows of the school bus. And there's a dedicated wing jet for the fifth graders. And then our work with Sarah, who I had mentioned before, there are social and emotional learning intervention groups that are going to be taking places based on teacher recommendations. And that'll be focusing on mindfulness practices, restorative practices, and sensory work. There'll be lessons during independent study once a week for 20 minutes for the fifth graders on an actual SEL lesson taught to kids. And then there, we're putting in place lunch bunch groups with a focus on how to make friends, pre-adolescent behavior, social, emotional learning, overcoming obstacles and making friends, and focusing in on music every ten years. So we're excited about that positive energy for kids. It's an awkward stage for kids to get together and make friends at pre-adolescence. And then finally, I do believe our, Deborah did a piece on this, on separating the fifth graders, focusing on academic and developmental needs and encouraging friendships. And we will share all the structure for the cafeteria and some of the really cool things that should be happening and are happening in the middle school. I'm pleased when I walk into all the schools, they're really very orderly. There's a lot of teaching and learning going on. So I heard stories about the middle school this, last year, but I am not experienced in that at all. So thank you. And I do believe that concludes our superintendent's report this month.
Thank you so much. Very, very detailed. Does anybody have any questions? Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. 2.02, compliments and complaints. I don't know if we have any of this.
We do. We have two compliments.
Yay!
And we have two complaints.
Okay.
And I'm going to pass those around to the board to take a look at.
Awesome. Any, the compliments, is there anyone we can just, just see? I'm going to download this on, so I can, word, word, touch the board. Shout out for some middle school teachers that are working very collaboratively and much appreciated. And and a shout out to a district office employee who is very responsive to emails and is always getting necessary information out when needed. So thank you for those compliments. We love to see them. Okay. Moving on. Board of Education Committee reports, 3.01, Audit Facilities and Operations. Who is the chair? Not here?
Mr. Currie.
Okay. So if it's okay with you guys, the minutes are in board docs?
Thank you.
If you, we don't need to report out unless somebody wants to.
Yeah, the minutes are in board docs. More importantly, the meetings are now recorded and are actually visible online. So I have less concern that we go into depth on the minutes in person. Thank you.
So then we're going to just move on to special education. Wellness. Trustee Wise, is it okay that the minutes are just there and you can go actually watch the meeting? It's recorded.
Yeah, meeting is recorded. I will say that we dove deeper into the disciplinary data we have, which we discussed at length last year, and some of the sort of more depth we're starting to get on that information from the new student information system. Full details are in the recording. Feel free to check it out.
Thank you. Okay. The liaison meeting. That is just a quick report, if you don't mind. Trustee McLeone?
On the executive parent council meeting? Or the order finance?
All right, what's here?
Order is there.
Only one's here?
The parent council one is there. Oh, no, that's CTA.
Yeah, that's an older.
That's an old one.
Older one, I just did, that's mine.
You know what? I'm going to then wait to the next, the 21st, because neither one of the minutes are in board docs.
The other one I don't have.
Okay, so if that's okay, we'll put it on for the 21st, because there are no actual minutes, and I'd rather wait till the minutes are also there.
Not a problem. It was a wonderful meeting.
Great. Well, we're very happy about that, and we can't wait to hear about it.
Do we need a motion to amend the agenda? Or we just consider that the discussion in?
It's just a discussion item anyway. Yeah, we don't have to vote on it or anything. Okay, moving on to 5.01, our consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented or amended as recommended by our acting superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? We do have a few donations. If anybody, since John isn't here, anybody want to read them out, or I can? Okay. I will. All right, I just got to open them up then. We have a donation of an eight-burner grass gill, grill. From our Booster Club. I'm not sure which Booster Club, so.
Carmel Rams Booster Club.
Carmel Rams, thank you so much, Carmel Rams Booster Club. That's wonderful. We have a donation from the Chestnut Market in town. It's a new, I think, store in one of our gas stations. And they have a grant program, and they give to local schools in their, where their stores are. And they're giving us $500. Thank you very much. Chestnut Market. And we have a donation of baked goods from the George Fisher Middle School Future Business, right? Is that what that is?
Yeah, FBLA.
Okay. Future Business Leaders of America. Thank you so much.
So if I can just comment briefly on the eight-burner gas grill from the Booster Club. The Booster Club, this is just, that is such an incredible organization. Every bit of money that they raise comes right back to us. And this is just another example of how you have members of the community who are volunteering their time, supporting the kids, supporting the athletes, supporting the student athletes, and giving right back. And we really appreciate you. Thank you.
This eight-burner gas grill is going to be used where? Do we know?
I think that it is going to be by the concession stand, right?
Concession stand, yeah.
That is my.
Yep, it's to replace old piece of equipment. It's much needed and very expensive.
Great. Thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, oppositions? Okay, motion passed. Great. Moving on to 6.01. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the instructional and non-instructional personnel request as recommended by the acting superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Trustee Wise?
Yes, I have a couple of quick questions. I will keep it brief. First question I had, I noticed there's a stipend here for grant administration.
Could you just tell us where you're looking?
Yep. One second. It's in the stipend section, I believe on the second-to-last page. But let me just verify. Under stipends, co-curricular, on the second-to-last page, there is a stipend for grant administration in the amount of $5,500. So my understanding, this is grant-funded. But I just wanted to understand for the record, the, what the division is between the work of this grant administrator and the service that we're paying for through BOSIS? Sort of where, which, which position does which work?
Sure. This is, Dr. Gorman may help me with this, but this is in-house work for grants that already exist and to process certain grants that come through. It's separate from finding the grants and writing the grants. We don't do that. This is just running them from our office.
Primarily Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV.
Okay, so where we have reporting requirements back and so forth. Thank you very much. Next question I had, I noticed there are a number of stipends here at the high school level for math lab support. And I'm just curious, since this is paid for per session, is this work that's happening during the school day, or is this after-school work?
After-school, and it's tied into the title grants as well.
Okay.
And part of it is a bilingual component as well.
Okay, so this is something that, is this, now, for that time that's worked after-school in support of this, is this stipend in addition to overtime, or is this in place of overtime?
This is, this is not an overtime. This is for doing additional work after-school. It's not related to, to anybody's salary or anything like that.
Okay, so there's no additional cost of having people stay after? This is the total cost of it?
Yes.
What is math lab?
So it's, the high school for the last three years has put together an intervention lab for kids that are struggling after-school. And you get certificated teachers, and it's been, Lauren wrote it into the title grants. So it's, it's just extra help for designated kids that need help in mathematics and not during the school day.
Wonderful.
And the last question I have, and this is a clarification that was requested by a couple of members of the community, so I just wanted to pass it on. I noticed that both this year and the previous year, we have folks coming back to the district who are former students here coming back in a substitute teacher role. And I'm just curious what the sort of job requirements of that are, what, in terms of experience? Because these are called, you know, is this something people normally do in the course of their college education? Or is it their certification requirement, or how does that come together?
We're going to get some answers on that, and we will get it to you at a different time.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to.
We don't have that answer right now.
Yeah, I do think that does inform the voting on this, so.
So if you're asking what the, right now, the only thing I think required to be a substitute teacher in terms of certifications or things is a high school diploma. If, is, does that answer?
That does answer my question, yes.
Okay. So I think that's what you were asking, and that's the answer.
That is certainly an answer.
Okay. All right. All right, so anybody else? Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, oppositions? Okay, motion passed. 6.02. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the corrective action plan for the internal audit of cash receipts and revenue dated June 6, 2025 as recommended by the acting superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Ken, would you like to talk to us a little bit about this?
Sure. So each year, we do an internal audit by a separate company. This is not our internal claims auditor. This is not our external auditor. It's a separate company that the board approves through an RFP. And they do, they look at various aspects of what we do and assign a risk percentage. It's pretty subjective, but it's a risk percentage. So let's say payroll would be considered more risky than some other areas. Managing benefits, health insurance, things like that. Then they assign a risk to that. So they came up with a few things that they thought needed correction. And what you are approving tonight is the corrective action plan from the audit, which was done, it's kind of half before I got here and half while I'm here. So it was from July of last year through, through June of this past year. And so they had several concerns having to do with the keeping of cash, things that are signed off on, checks that they, they found that were old checks, and what was being done with them. So we came up with a corrective action plan. That's in this, each, each item that they state, that the auditor said has been commenting on, and a corrective action plan, my name is attached to each piece of it. If and when the board approves this, this will go up on the state website to the state portal. Will be submitted into portal, will be submitted into the portal, and the Controller's Office will be reviewing the results.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, thank you very much for that explanation.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, oppositions? Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, 6.03. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the usage of approximately $235,000 from the unused capital account of $687,000 for the purpose of replacing the emergency generators at the three elementary schools as recommended by the acting superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? I think we've talked about this before, but does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I know we talked about the need for this, and I think that makes a lot of sense. The particular quote which was selected here that went through a CFP process, quote?
This is our procured vendor for electrical work.
Okay, but given the size of.
This is off, this is off a bid for the vendor itself.
Understood. So there was a bidding process before we selected the vendor?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, oppositions? Motion passed. Thank you. 6.04. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the transfer of $3,120,000 from an insurance liability account into insurance reserve account as recommended by the acting superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Would you like, give, give us like a?
Sure.
One-minute explanation?
Well, as long as it takes.
Maybe a minute.
This is, this is good, I swear.
It's a good amount of money, I like the amount of.
We've talked about this before, so I just wanted to make sure.
So, for a long time, we have had a little over $3 million in a liability reserve, meaning that we believed we owed money related to health insurance. And we don't pay insur, health insurance premiums. We're self-funded. What we have are what's called premium equivalents. We, and we have now an insurance reserve. That insurance reserve has $2.8 million in it today. The auditors have said that we are improperly keeping, by the way, these are new auditors this year through an RFP. They say we are improperly keeping this $3.1 million as a liability when it's really an asset. And so it, we are asking the Board to dissolve this liability, and we would like to take this entire amount of money and put it into the existing insurance reserve, which has no limit to what can be in it, and has no particular time when it dissolves, as other reserves may. This will give us, whatever's 3.1 plus 2.8, in our insurance reserve. This money can be used to offset premium equivalents, meaning it will help to pay for health insurance for next year. And so, my plan already, in the basics of the 26-27 budget that we have spoken about, and that is underway already, is to use about a million dollars from this reserve next year to offset taxpayer expense and other expenses. So if this reserve has almost $6 million in it, we cannot justify just keeping it, but we should be using it to reduce taxpayer obligations. The Board may at some point say, let's use a million and a half, but I want to make sure this money lasts for a number of years. So putting a million dollars in, even if we did it every year, we would have this for six years, assuming nothing else comes up. But remember, as we have additional fund balance, we also have the ability to add to this reserve, should we be using this reserve over time. So because we're, I'm gonna recommend that we use a million dollars next year, that doesn't mean it won't be, it won't be more or less, but it will substantially offset the cost of health insurance.
Thank you.
It wasn't a minute, but.
It wasn't, but.
But it was very helpful, thank you. And so this was a question of, under our previous practice, we expected that these expenses were, were going to come into us, and we were holding money for them.
It was, it was to, it was to offset future claims from the past, so people could claim health insurance obligations from a past accident or operation or something like that. And our auditor said that is not the case.
Perfect, thank you. And yay for the new auditor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, oppositions? Motion passed. Thank you. 6.05. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Carmel Central School District approves the establishment of Detective John M. Falcone Memorial Scholarship as recommended by the acting superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Great, so this is a wonderful new scholarship that will be offered. As you guys can see, there's some criteria here that.
I would like to read it.
You would like to read it?
I would like to read it.
Please.
But, so John Falcone is a graduate of Carmel High School, for those of you who don't know. Graduated in 1985. Those of you who don't know, I graduated in 1985, so I graduated with John Falcone. And I remember reading in the paper, the day that prefaced the creation of this award, and Carmel High School, class of 1985, has their 40th reunion coming up, and he will be thought of fondly and kindly. And for those of you who did not know him, it is truly your loss. He was an incredibly kind soul, who was caring and giving, and the way his life ended was truly trying to do the best in protecting another human. So this is to, and if I, if my voice cracks, I apologize. This is for Detective John M. Falcone Memorial Scholarship, and he won't be there, and he graduated in 1985, that was the connection. Criteria, graduate going into law enforcement if possible. I would like to, little side note, I hope whoever has awarded this understands the incredible responsibility it takes to wear a shield in the way that John Falcone did. It is a $250 award, and for whoever receives this, please understand that the financial award pales in comparison to being honored to receive this award. The selection criteria, the ideal candidate for the Detective John M. Falcone Memorial Scholarship will be a student who intends to enter the field of law enforcement, a student who has demonstrated leadership through student activities throughout their time in the Carmel Central School District, a student who has completed community service to benefit our community, and a student who has earned a weighted GPA of 83%, a B or higher. The scholarship applicant will complete a two-to-three paragraph essay regarding their interest in a career in law enforcement. If you have any questions, please contact Mr. Piazza.
Thank you. And thank you to his, thank his family who's establishing this. It's a wonderful tribute. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, oppositions? Great, we have a new scholarship award. Okay, 6.06. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the following field trip request as recommended by acting superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions about this?
Yeah, so just the question we had in the earlier, so we see this comes to a price of $100 per student participating. Are there any supports in place for parents who are not able to meet that cost?
I'd like to answer that.
Yeah, well, hold on. And second, is there any possibility to move additional monies from the field trip fund to reduce that cost?
Can I answer the first part?
You can.
So the people who are putting on this field trip are the same teachers that taught my son, who is now in graduate school. And I can tell you right now, in the four years that my son was part of the incredible music program here, no student was ever excluded for a trip for financial means. Students were always able to go. No student was ever excluded. And I know that for a fact, because my son had several friends who could not afford to go, and means were provided.
I always worry, because as we've seen with the Washington trip, we hear sometimes from parents after who said, well, I didn't know that this would have been available. I'm not saying that's the case with this trip. Or frankly, who have a, you know, a principled reason not to want to accept a charity for this purpose. I understand that not every trip that every student goes on can be fully funded, but given the relatively small overall cost of the trip, is there any way we could, could reduce the price of this using the field trip budget that's available?
So I think that there is already some money that is being subsidized, $6,668, that's already being subsidized, so the cost of the total trip is, is like $16,000? It's not $10,000?
Right, but that's, that says, that's the amount that's being put up by clubs or the PTO.
Yeah.
The question is, we've, as the Board, have made it a priority to budget field trips, and I'm wondering if the money we set aside for that purpose, which in past years has repeatedly come back to us as unspent at the end of the year, could be used to support this?
I think that that's a very good question, and I think there's a couple of things that we have to look at here. I don't know if this particular trip is, some of our trips are like class trips, some of them are department trips, some of them are, you know, extracurricular, some of them support the curriculum. So I think we have to kind of get all of those questions, but I think that if it's something the Board could do, that would be wonderful, but I don't, also don't want to not pass this, if this needs to be passed so they can plan the trip.
Yeah, I would not want to block the trip, but I think a additional resolution.
I don't have that answer.
It literally, so it says partially student-funded, partially funded through CHS Building Field Trip Fund.
Right.
I think, I know, I'm not quite sure how it's done in Carmel. I don't know how the funds are disseminated for each building, but I know in most districts, in all districts outside of Carmel that I am aware of, there is a level of building control, and there's only so much in the till. Yes, we as a Board committed significant funds toward field trips, however, that's for all of the trips, and since we're already giving a significant portion to this trip, if we give more, then that's money that won't be going toward other trips. So I think it kinda, I think for us to start getting into the weeds on this one complicates it.
Yeah, I think that, I think the other thing is this is benefiting, I think, 100 students, which is wonderful, but our high school has something like 1,300 students, and I think that our budget for field trips is only $20,000.
Which is not, yeah.
Which is not used every year, correct?
No, no, I think it's used at the high school.
Was it used last year, all of it?
You said it was used at the high school.
Can I, can I just ask one question? The total cost of this trip is $10,000?
No, it's not.
No? It can't be?
$16,000 something.
Why does it say?
Because, I asked this question, and it is actually because of the way that this form, it's like a Google-y form, that they could not get the form to show the actual total cost of the trip. I have asked administration to revisit that, because it is very misleading, and I picked this up in the agenda setting, and there is supposed to be actually a memo that, hold on, talks about the total cost, but it still says it. I mean, if we.
It's not misleading, it's completely confusing.
If you, if you add the 6,000, 6,668 plus the $10,000, that's the actual cost of the trip.
Well, then that's the number that should be listed.
I agree.
Under total cost of the trip.
I guess the.
Right. Yeah, you couldn't do it.
This is a, this is a function of the bad form.
So, that's fair enough, but we should be provided that information before we get the document. You know, let us know now.
I did ask them to do that, I don't know if.
Yeah. Just fine, just, you know, just be aware, guys, it's, that $10,000 is not accurate. You have to add, do some math on your own to figure out the total.
Yeah, I do wanna, I do wanna, you know, with respect to the point that this is 100 students out of 1,300, we have sports teams that have six, seven students on them, and when they go to a match, it's fully funded.
But that's got nothing to do with it.
I don't think we should be devaluing our music program or arts programs relative to that.
I'm not suggesting that we do that, Jim, at all, but I don't know, I mean, what, I think.
Are these regular school buses or coach buses?
The cost is virtually identical.
Transportation is.
Between coach and regular school bus, they're identical?
Virtually identical.
Let's get the coach, then.
So $16,000.
Some other students get coach buses.
So here's, here's the other piece, is that when this, a major cost of this trip is it's a $5,000 cost for a meal. Our, our athletes don't do that. So $5,000 of this entire trip is for a meal?
Meals.
No, it's, it's one meal, I asked.
Well, just for clarity, it says here, total cost of meals.
Right, but it's, it's lunch.
Yeah.
So.
It's a lot more palatable when it's plural, and you say singular, it's less palatable.
But I'm just trying to say what it is for, it's for lunch.
I appreciate it. Just paring out another glaring error.
You know, if we're gonna be comparing, we need to compare apples to apples, so I, I, this is a trip that's gone on like for many, many years. My, my children went on it when they were part of the music department. I do believe that Jordy is correct, that if there's a student that can't afford it, they are, there is like, I don't know if it's scholarship money, but I know that the department will help them. There's not gonna be somebody that can't go because of finances.
But we do have to recognize that it's demoralizing and signatizing for a student to have to ask for that. No student, so whenever something like that happens, the only people that would know that would be either the teacher and the student, no, like, no one knows. And then there comes a point where there's only so much that we can do. I know myself, running trips over the course of my career, I have many students who require some assistance, and literally, the only people who knew were those who had to sign off on the checks.
So that might be okay with this group, because I get it, it's musicians and everyone's tight-knit and everybody, but the practice with other groups, you wouldn't know if a student couldn't afford a field trip just because they didn't sign up. You wouldn't know that they didn't sign up because they couldn't afford it.
Right.
In this case, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Hey, so-and-so, why aren't you coming on this field trip? Oh, I can't afford it. Well, we're gonna work that out. You know, I understand, but there are a lot of other cases where sort of may not, because they know mom and dad, you know, my parents, my parents' figures can't afford it, and I'm not gonna ask them, and I'm not gonna sign up for the trip.
That's right.
The practice.
So at the end of the day, though, we need to, I, we need to approve this trip. This trip is happening on October 24th, so let's vote on the trip, and then we can have, you know, discussions about future forms and such of that.
Jim said we make a resolution to the trip.
I would suggest we, I would like to introduce a motion to amend this resolution. If we were to, we've just heard that we were, in fact, we had in fact $3,000, $3 million more in the, available to us that, or that we will not have to fund into reserves than we thought we would.
That's allocated for insurance, right? We can't.
But we can't move that specific money, but it's money we will not have to replace from the general fund. I would propose that we pass this resolution with an amendment to, for the, to transfer $2,500 from the general fund to reduce the cost from 100 to 75 per student.
I.
We can't.
Yeah, well, we can, if you can get a second, which I'll give you, because I always give a second. So, let's take a, let's take a vote on your proposed language.
Wait a minute. Can we do that?
Yes. He's, he made a motion to us to amend it. I gave him a second.
No, it's, can we just pull it out of the general fund?
It is, it is in the general fund.
Oh, the, the field trips are in the general fund. Just pulling more out.
Just putting more into that.
Right, so we're adding additional.
We're using more of it up.
So, so here's where my issue with that is, Jim. We don't have enough information about this particular trip, other trips that are offered, how many other trips are gonna come in front of us. I.
Don't worry, I'm gonna propose this for all of them.
I think what we can ask our administration is to give us a, you know, a three-month I think what we can ask our administration is to give us a, um, you know, a three-month projection of what field trips are, are coming down the pike, what our, um, budget is for them, what percentages are we, are we paying? But, you know, this is, this is a little bit of a different field trip. This is, this is not just an educational experience. They're also doing, you know, a social experience with going out to eat. I mean, how many of our field trips are, are, are doing that? I don't know. I don't think many.
The meals is an important consideration.
I mean, Ellis Island does, Washington does.
So I asked this question because I thought five thousand dollars was a lot of money to eat. And they're going to a specific place, I think, with the Broad- Broadway diner where the.
Fifty bucks per person?
The people.
That is high.
The people.
But it's New York City.
But the people perform, so it's, you know, it's, it's, which is why.
They have singers.
It's, you know, which is why the parents are also helping to fund this, because that's an experience that not all our field trip students are going to get. So I think you have a motion on the floor, but I will be voting no to that motion, because I don't think that it's equitable, because it's hard to give all kids that level of experience, so, um, can I have a roll call vote, please? I just wanna make sure I have the motion correct.
Yeah, so I'm inserting, I'm voting to, or I am proposing, moving to insert the following language. Uh, as recommended by the Acting Superintendent of Schools, comma, and that twenty-five hundred dollars be allocated from the general fu- be transferred from the general fund to offset the cost to parents of this trip.
So he is the, our acting superintendent is not recommending that, so it would just be you?
Which is why I added that after, as recommended by our, uh, Acting Superintendent.
So can we have a roll call vote?
Sure. Trustee Douglas.
No.
Trustee Grasso.
No.
Trustee Magliano.
No.
President Orser.
No.
Trustee Torpe?
Yes.
That's everybody, right?
Uh.
Oh, Trustee Wise, I'm sorry.
Also yes.
I was like, something's wrong here.
Okay, motion did not pass, so I'm going back to the original motion, which is be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the field trip request as recommended by our acti- uh, Acting Superintendent of Schools. Kat and I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, so, um.
Oh, there was a, you were ahead.
Yeah, we already had.
Yeah, so whatever. Okay, so we did it twice. Um, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Douglas.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Trustee Grasso.
Yes.
Trustee Magliano.
Of course.
President Orser.
Yes.
Trustee Torpe?
Yes.
Trustee Wise?
Also yes.
Wonderful. I hope they have a wonderful time.
May I make a comment?
You may.
Um, I think that there's a strong feeling and sympathy with, uh, Trustee Wise's idea here. And I think that your suggestion that we take a view of the broad scope of this is a very good idea, given the fact that the public has been in favor of supporting field trips, and perhaps some kind of level of annual planning, uh, would be appropriate to be able to realize both greater facilitation of field trips and fiscal responsibility in pursuing them.
Thank you.
I, I have to agree with Trustee Grasso wholeheartedly, that if we start trying to pull monies out throughout the year, then we're asking the people who are responsible for stewardishing, for stewarding our fiscal wholeness and our fiscal responsibility, we're asking them to manage, and at any point, we can just start moving lines, and that is dangerous. I think what we need to do is look at it from an annual perspective, and this coming year in the spring, when, and as we talk about the budget for next year, we could look at it from that perspective. But at this table, to start pulling monies, I think is a dangerous precedent.
So, I do, I think, you know, we don't have a motion on the table right now, so I do wanna keep this short. But I do wanna say that this board has repeatedly stated that our priority for funds is that field trips be more funded and parents bear less of the burden of them. That has repeatedly not happened, and money has come back from these funds, so that's why I feel it important we step in here. Thank you.
All right, I'm moving on to six point zero seven. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached memorandum of agreement between the Carmel Central School District and the Carmel Administrators Association, that the collective bargaining agreement expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, be extended for a period of three years, July one, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, and remain unchanged except as set forth in the MOA as recommended by the Acting Superintendent of Schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that this is a good example of the constantly ongoing process of negotiation of our contracts with bargaining units. I think this is a fair contract. I think this was well negotiated by both sides, and I'm very much in support of this. I think, I hope that this, including the support ea- each side got from the other, will inform the upcoming negotiations in the months and year ahead as we go into much larger and more impactful in the budget negotiation processes. Thank you.
Are you gonna mention, John?
One of us can mention, you'd like to, or?
Oh, it's us, too.
Um, so, uh, Trustee Curzio, um, wanted, uh, the public and the board to know that if he was here this evening, he would be voting no on this. Okay, okay, all in favor?
Uh, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do. Um, John Sped said specifically, um, that he doesn't think it's respectful for our taxpayers, that this, to our taxpayers, that this unit would, uh, only be paying sixteen percent in healthcare contribution by the end of the contract. And he also doesn't agree with specifically some of the individual raises in the contract. Um, I just going to mention, I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I was not involved in any of the negotiation for this bargaining unit, um, so I don't think it would be appropriate for me to vote in this.
Okay, all right.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Sure, can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Douglas.
Yes.
Trustee Grasso.
Yes.
Trustee Magliano.
Yes.
President Orser.
Yes.
Trustee Torpe, I'm putting you down as abstained, and Trustee Wise.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much, motion carried. Okay. Six point zero eight. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Carmel Central School District approves the deletion of policy two-two-zero-one, annual district meeting and election, which has been replaced by policy one-zero-five-zero, annual district meeting, as recommended by the Acting Superintendent of Schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, I, this is just, uh, we're pulling one, because we've already put one in.
Yeah, so the election timeline stuff in here is, none of that is discretionary to us, it's all covered by law, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I have sentience, oppositions, motion carried. Okay. Six point oh nine.
So this is, we need to, I think this is a walk-on, so we need a motion to add this to the agenda?
It's already on the agenda.
Hold on, you have to refresh if it's not there.
It's on the agenda. Be it resol- yes, if you don't see six point zero nine, please, um, refresh your computers. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Dr. Aaron Meehan Farben as the school executive to assist the district with its leadership transition plan pursuant to the terms and conditions as outlined in the attached consultant agreement. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
So could we just talk briefly about what this is? I know we, uh, we've reviewed this in exact, but for the information to the public, you know, this, as we know, we have an outgoing superintendent, we have an incoming superintendent. Uh, per the actual term of their contracted superintendent, there cannot be two superintendents, but it's obviously important that there be some period of overlap to allow transfer of information, uh, mentorship and support of the new superintendent in that role. So this is a consulting agreement, uh, which will cover some days of work uh, post the end of Aaron's agreement that would support that. Uh, it's on slightly different terms in the interim agreement, but because of other expenses involved in having a full-time employee versus a consultant, this ends up saving the district money over what it would, what we would have spent have Aaron here longer on.
And the term of the agreement is from October seventeenth to December first, and it's for sixty hours.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
I have sentience, oppositions, motion carries. So we have the wonderful, um, experience for this district, that we are going to have a wonderful new incoming superintendent that is going to have the transition period with our wonderful, um, superintendent that is leaving, and that we look very much forward to that time period where the two of them will work collaboratively for the best interest of our district. Okay, wonderful. Six point one zero. Be it resolved that the Board of Ed- Education hereby approves the appeal filed by the parents of student one-zero-zero-seven-two-five pursuant to the district code of conduct based on a procedural error. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, oppositions, okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Seven point zero one, old business. Does anybody have old business? Okay, um, so I think this is an appropriate time to talk about the field trips. So I'm going to ask that our administration put together something for our October twenty-first meeting, which I would like to see exactly what is budgeted for each, not just school, but department, because I think that within schools, there's field trips in, like, in art and in music, so total budgeted for each school. That would include both the schools and the departments in those schools.
I would also like to know how we arrived at those numbers.
We did in the budget process last year, so I just don't remember what they were.
No, I know, I would like to know how we arrived at the numbers that we arrived, whoever the budget is for each school, how do we come to that determination? What the appropriate budget should be. What should the appropriate budget be for middle s- uh, middle school, high school, et cetera, X amount of students?
So, uh, Dr. Gorman and I have already planned for next year's budget. When the principals get their budget documents to prepare, they will, we, since there has been so much discussion about this, not just tonight, but previously, we've already agreed that we will be requesting of the principals specifics about their plans for field trips for next year, rather than putting twenty grand in and saying, okay, what would you like to do six months later? So we think that in the budget processes, we go from, from now, uh, through, through the time the board approves the budget next year, we will have specifics that we will be able to attach to the budget so that people understand. We will still provide you with, with what you're asking for tonight, but going forward, this is already our plan.
Oh, great.
So not only do I think that the board wants to see the financial figures, but I think we also want, if you could reach out to all of the principals and find out what is in the, um, calendar that's already scheduled, and what those costs are, so we have an idea of what the expenditures are and going to be, and what would be left. So when we are sitting up here making decisions, we have a better understanding of, can we help fund something if there's nothing else kind of on the agenda? And I think what Jordy said and what Michael said is also very important, that every grade level should have something on the calendar. And if they don't now, that maybe you can kind of speak to the principals to start that process and, you know, get those underway. For the twenty-first?
So if I, if I understand this, Mr. Silver, you're saying that, well, repeat again what you said about getting the trips set for next year.
What we're going to do, we've already decided, we're going to ask the principals for an outline of what they're, what they're thinking, but that will be from the teachers first. So the teachers will be asked what, what field trips they think they would like to do, and the principal will then put that together into part of what the principal will submit as their budget request for next year.
And that would be a general idea, not an absolute.
I don't think you could have it absolute.
You can't.
I think an outline of what their, what their, what their concept would be for field trips for next year.
There are some trips that, of course, happen annually, and then there are some trips that come November, I'm like, oh my God, I can take them on the Clearwater, I can take them to the Maritime Center. Hey, I can get a Raptor show coming in, I can do an in-house field trip, there are all these different things, but you won't know that.
Right, so what there can be is an outline of, of specific wants, and then there can be a contingency for things that we don't know about. Or we could have a general contingency for the district-wide, since the board has to approve every field trip anyway. We can have a separate line item with X thousand dollars in it for other field trips that we don't now know about.
And historically, if you could let us know, because we do have specific field trips that are in this district that we know kids go on every year, no matter what. If you could let us know the amount of the field trip that is funded through the district versus parental-funded versus, you know, booster or club-funded, because I think that, so we have an idea of what the district is actually contributing.
Right, we'll give you a couple of year look at that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Madam President, um, I think it's, I think, I think, I don't know what criteria has been established on field trips as it relates to curriculum standards, experiential learning, planning. Um, your idea of having at least one or two grade-level field trips is a really good parameter, but then how it ties into the curriculum is really what I'm concerned about most. Um, that's a deeper dive, and I have to do a little more research. I don't know if I get all that information on the twenty-first.
First meeting in November.
I think that, that would be great, but I think that is really how we're generating field trips, not for the sake of just taking field trips, which everybody wants to support, but I, we wanna make sure that it ties connected to, to the learning experience.
That would give you about a month, is that enough time?
Solid.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may make a, a comment as well, I think that, uh, Trustee Wise's idea also of lowering the costs of individual field trips to make them more generally accessible is also one that's worthy of attention. Um, because if there are members of our community that are prevented from participating, increasing the funding for, uh, the field trips would increase the number of students who get the benefit that Dr. Gorman is talking about, and I think that's worth taking a hard look at to make sure we can do it. Uh, the second point, well, go ahead, and then I'll tell you my second point.
I agree, and I think that that's what, one of the things Dr. Gorman is gonna bring to us, because there's a difference between a fourth-grade, uh, classroom that goes to the Great Swamp. That means all students in that class go regardless, and, versus what the field trip that was in front of us tonight, that is a very specific field trip for, uh, you know, mu- uh, children in, or students in, um, different, um, music programs. It's an, I don't think it's like, you're a ninth-grade chorus and this is your field trip. It's a very different field trip. So I think we, we as a board really need to understand the types of field trips.
Yep.
You know, because if it's a class field trip, there should never be a reason a student doesn't go.
Exactly right, and I like, uh, Jordy's idea, um, Trustee, um, Jordy's idea of also in onsite. It's an educational experience, bringing people in from the outside. The more education our students get, the better. The final thing I would say is, we know this is a bottom-up process, that it's the teachers that propose the field trips. They provide the quality ideas that the administration will evaluate, and I think it would be a very, uh, good idea to encourage our instructors to come up with creative ideas. And if that's part of the activity, I think we'll have greater success.
I do believe the form needs revamping as well.
Yeah. Agreed, agreed.
Software is actually good, but the form needs help.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. All right, anything else in old business, guys? All right, eight point zero one, old, uh, open session. Is there anybody out here that wants to address us?
Um, Megan Williams, Lake Carmel. My first thing is kind of more of a statement, but it's also a question towards, um, Mr. Gorman. So when, it's just sticking in me, I'm sorry. When you were going over your data for, um, foreign language, I believe French ping-pongs in French one between the high school and the middle school. So like this year, French one wouldn't be offered in the high school, it would only be offered in the middle school. And next year, it would be offered in the high school. So your data for George Fisher Middle School would have to pull from twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four versus twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. Do you know what I'm saying?
I, I need to do more work on that then, because I, because I'm new to the district, so I will.
Yeah, so I think that's why you're seeing the raise in French, because it wasn't actually offered to those kids. And because of the way that seventh, eighth grade is, uh, set up, you have to take the first and the second year, and in high school, you could take it any year. So, um, but the foreign language only starts in seventh, you wouldn't be able to take French one in eighth grade. Um, so I don't know, it just stuck out to me, and it was kind of like, it's a me thing. The other thing is, um, in regards to, uh, field trips, I think it's important to, um, understand that things like what Trustee Wise is talking about, um, historically, there are a lot of parents who do need help, uh, families that do need help, that very well hide it. And, um, there is a fear of their kids getting stigmatized. So, um, teachers don't know it. So the kids might come to school with, you know, this or that, and it looks like, but mom and dad haven't bought new jeans in like three years. They're wearing those ones to the bone so their kids can have everything. I think it's also important to understand, when you look into things like Washington, being one of our big trips that are done yearly, you have fundraisers that we do, so those fundraisers can take cost off. So I think like last year was like eight hundred and fifty dollars per, um, kid to go for the trip. But. But that depends on your ability to have family or friends who can afford to purchase things out of your kids' fundraisers. So even knocking cost off of what you might be paying depends on your network of people who are around you. And sadly to say, a lot of times we see that educated families have more access to wealthier friends and wealthier families because of generational wealth and things of that nature. So I think that plays into things of what Jim is saying, and there is a lot of parents that won't say something to trustee Douglas's point. If you are dealing with a smaller classroom, or you have a more intimate relationship with a family or a student, you might know their situation, but you might not. So there are a lot of students that do get lost, and there are a lot of students that I know personally from last year, because my daughter was an eighth grader last year going to Washington, where their families did not go to Washington because they could not afford it, and they would not reach out to the district for a payment plan. And I repeatedly pushed to them that, you know, you could reach out to this teacher, that he was very willing to help, and they simply would not do it because they felt a certain kind of way, and decided to replace that with things like museum trips and things like that for their kids to celebrate while their peers were in Washington. Another common thing has been the debate over if Washington is tied to curriculum or not. It has often been stated that it's not curriculum-based, even though there is a project that kids do do around it. Now, there are children who are having IEPs or are in self-contained, like classrooms, where it is not mandated for them to do those projects, and it is a chosen thing. If they want to participate, they can do it, but it is not included within their grade. But you're a general education student, it is, otherwise they have to do another project in lieu of that, and they're given information. So to say that it doesn't actually tie to curriculum isn't exactly the truth, because you're building a whole curriculum for them based on the fact that they're missing that trip. There was a few other things, but that was like pretty much the main things. I'd also like to state that last night I did go to policy. I was a little late, my apologies, I split myself in half. But I do know that, we were talking about the fact that the parent council committee meeting minutes will be in the next meeting. That is fine. I do know that there was very much talked about at length, which you guys will see in the minutes when they are prepared, that PTOs and boosters and things of that nature have requested repeatedly to be notified when they are being talked about at any point about fundraising and things like that, and given proper notification, which our SI, who is currently acting, knew about and was involved in about, and there was talks last night, and they were not reached out to. So I think that we again need to be very careful that when we're talking about fundraisers that go about boosters and PTOs, and you're bringing in these types of informations, and you promise things from one trustee, and then other trustees do another thing, it erodes the trust within the board as a whole, because you can't trust you as a full unit, as a functioning body, because it seems like certain trustees are just doing things as they want to do. So I would just caution about that. I don't think that any harm was meant by that. I just want to say that this has been an ongoing situation, and one that if we are promising to change, that we actually do the work and change it. All right, have a great night.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to clear a couple of things up from, from earlier. You know, one of them was that when I asked about the renovations to the former superintendent, you know, she looked to you, Kent, Mr. Silver, and, and basically, you said it came from the current year's budget, and I quote what you said, "It was purchased under the supplies." That, that's the why, that's the reason why I brought it up, because that's what you told me. So it's on tape, you can go and look it up if you'd like to, but that's the only, that's the only reason why I questioned it, because it seemed like there's a lot of stuff involved that just to lump it under supplies would seem strange to me. And you did kind of clear it up by saying this was bought under, you know, there was different codes it was bought under. With that being said, do we have an approximate cost of that entire renovation, or is that something that's going to be, need to be foiled, or is, I mean, I know you probably don't have exact numbers right now, but you got a roundabout figure?
So we, we are actually preparing that on a much more detailed look at it at this point for, for a foil that does exist.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, thank you. Also, another thing, I, I wasn't saying that we had overspent the budget last year and what was. I was just saying that there's a lot of money every year, you know, you know, from that report, 63025, the total budget adjusted or otherwise was 164,960, and we had expensed at that time 147 million. I know that there's some bills that come in late and stuff like that, but it's every year we get the, we're able to put away four or five million dollars or so, and yet every year we're asked for, you know, just a little bit more. All we need is another, a little bit more. So that, that's all I was saying. As far as field trips, you know, I know I don't have kids in the district anymore, I just know that, you know, some of the struggles that people go through when you pay, you know, fairly high taxes, and you're still asked to pay for an additional money for the field trips. That field trip, not a dime of it comes out of the budget. It, it is subsidized, but it's subsidized by a club or a PTO. It's not out of, it's right on the paper, it's not out of our, the field trip budgets, and that's, that's probably why Jim brought that up, and, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but none of that, none of that money for that field trip comes out of the field trip budget. If it's 20 grand for the high school or whatever, you know, that's basically, you know. Sorry. Would be half of it, but I don't know how much is, is in, is in for the high school. But as far as you were saying about tying things into field trips and how they tie into the curriculum, well, now we have this, you know, newfangled thing that's, everybody speaks about, and it's social emotional learning and building relationships, so I guess every single field trip could just be tied into curriculum as, if you want to, I don't want to use the term lump it in, but it could be tied in with social emotional learning. Any, any field trip that happens is, is easily tied into the curriculum like that. You know, this is maybe a little picky, but you guys had said earlier about compliments and complaints, that there were two compliments and two complaints. You shared the compliments, you didn't share the complaints. Curious as what they are. And then also, I guess I had one other question, I don't know if you had mentioned it on that one consultant thing that you passed, but what is the cost of the consultant for those couple of months?
So the contract will be, is, I believe now a matter of public record. So the per diem cost, if the previous superintendent comes down and works for a full day on site is 1,250 dollars. The, if it's remote work, there's an hourly cost inside, which is in the contract.
So do we have, we have a guess about what that might end up being, or we're just going to have to figure it out as we go?
So it's a 60-hour contract, so.
Depends on how the hours are.
It depends on how much of that time is worked remotely versus in person.
We won't know.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to 9.01, board comments. Anybody?
I'd like to respond to some of the public comments tonight. The policy committee did not make any major policy changes during the committee meeting. We've been reviewing and updating policies and making sure that they are compliant and current and concise. I was certainly not made aware of any agreement about letting any of the other stakeholders involved aware of any major changes in policies, but certainly keep that in mind going forward. Back to the field trips. Mr. Lee is absolutely correct, based on the information that we're given here, not a single dollar comes out of our budget for this field trip. 10,000 comes from the students, the rest is subsidized by club or PTO. So if the total cost we're being told is 16,000 and change, that is accounted for here by payments from the students and the PTO, so none of this came out of our budget. I have it right in front of me. I did the math. Well, there's a lot of things here that say things different. The point is.
Yeah, that's my.
Correct me if I'm wrong, from anybody who actually knows, no money came out of our budget, or will be coming out of our budget for this field trip. It is being collected from the students and from the PTOs. I, for one, have always find it puts a bad taste in my mouth when the district reaches their handout for field trip money, and especially when the district, in this case, hasn't spent a dime.
Yeah, I do want to just.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I just want to bring this everybody's look, it says costs and funding.
Correct.
Not including transportation costs, what is the funding source for this trip? Partially student-funded, partially funded to Carmel High School Building Field Trip Fund?
I'm looking at the numbers on the paper. Do the math.
But I think that.
The words don't matter, the math is what matters.
No, what I'm saying is, I think that this field where it says amount subsidized by club and PTO is a standard field.
That's right.
They can't change that and put.
Correct.
So I'm just, so I'm just, if I may.
You can see this is a big problem is created.
Right, if I may step in, we're voting, we can only vote on the record in front of us. The record in front of us says that for a trip costing 16,000 dollars.
Phil and Tony's standing here, maybe he wants to say something.
10,000 comes, right.
He, since he is the person that is sponsoring this field trip, so.
Thank you.
Could you enlighten us maybe?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks for coming.
I apologize for, for interrupting.
Glad you're here, thank you.
I know this is not my time to speak, but.
I appreciate it, Jeff, you can help.
You're very accurate in the fact that the, the form is kind of wonky, to say, to say the least. The, the number that resides in the PTO column is agreed upon by Brian Piazza, our principal at Carmel High School, that is supposed to be coming from the, the high school lines of the field trip, not from PTO or club-funded. So that's 6,667, I believe the number is.
That is the number.
That is coming from the, the high school's allocation of the field trip money.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, that's.
This would have been better handwritten next time.
We appreciate your clarification.
I will say, as with trustee Torpe, I was struggling with the math here, if a 16,000 dollar trip, so it's 6,000 from PTO and 10,000 for parents, but now I understand that 6,000.
The math was easy, that's the word.
Exactly, the math I was not struggling with, the record's solving the math with the description we were given.
I agree, so this is new software or something? We're going to get this fixed, right? This is not going to happen again.
Yeah, this has to be fixed.
I'm good for a second?
Yes.
I would like to say something to Ms. Williams. I apologize, there was a technical glitch, so don't feel like betrayed or that anybody hasn't passed the buck in forwarding my PTO liaison minutes. It seems that nobody got them until today, so nobody was even aware of that part, and like I said, I just got them, I resent them, they didn't send the first time, but.
No harm.
No, 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 it is written down, that they requested the opportunity for feedback for policy, that anything regarding them, and I got it, and it's in the minutes, and everybody will be privy to them as soon as they're made public.
Anybody else?
I would like to forgive trustee Magliano for his error.
Trustee Douglas, we appreciate that.
My goodness.
Okay.
Well, if we're listening, sins, Jordy.
Okay, I am going to move to 10.01, where we are going to. Going back in? Oh, yes, we are going back in.
Three times tonight.
I need, I need language, because.
I don't know, yeah, I didn't have any.
I would stop you at the first.
May, I'm going to pick out the ones I know we need. May the Board of Education recess into executive session for the purposes of receiving legal guidance, for the employment history of a particular person, and for matters exempt from open meetings law. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We will not be coming out for any business, so good night, everybody.